And we'll move on to the approving the regular agenda. Was there anything that we needed added or changed or modified?
No.
Yes?
I do talk to be talked about. But no, it's interesting, but I don't still have to get your next meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else that we need to change or modify? Okay, if not, I'm gonna ask for approval for...
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Give the motion Chelsea approve with changes. Okay, if it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, as you announced, passed, approved. Okay, the consent agenda. You got a lot of stuff on there Jim, is anything you want to point out or?
Well, pretty much around the middle.
Yep, and you passed the mark. Okay. You guys have any questions on that?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion. Get a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you announce passes. Okay, the minutes for last meeting. Anybody's got any comments on that or?
We're accurate, motion approved.
Second.
Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Do we need to approve the special meeting? Oh, we did.
Yes. That's the next.
Sorry.
That's up next.
Sorry.
Getting ahead.
Getting caught up.
Okay. Anybody you got any questions on that or? Accept a motion, would you accept?
So moved.
I'll second.
Give us a motion, Brian does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries? Public comment? You got anything you want to talk about tonight or? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll move along. Sheriff's report, did you get anything from them?
I did not, but given the holiday and beginning of the month here.
Yeah, we'll just put that up until next. All right, so Brian, you got the next one here, Sleepy Hollow.
Hey. The next one item here is tied to Sleepy Hollow. That's that subdivision or neighborhood and I have Tom from that neighborhood here. If you have any questions regards this lift station. There's a lift station that was put in years ago, I don't think we ever figured out exactly who, what, when, where, why.
Sometime between when the development went in in the seventy-three to eighty-one, somewhere in the general timeframe.
So this this lift station is located about two-thirds of the way up in the Sleepy Hollow subdivision. It basically feeds the top half, top third of the subdivision where the houses are for discharging water. It does naturally flow, but it also forces that ditch water out there pretty effectively is my understanding. What the neighborhood is going through is they're they've been on well water for years and they're now going to Caserole water. And they had a water association that basically owned this lift station or maintained it at least and took care of it, paid electricity for it, all those different things like that. Our staff and our engineer, I think our first time ever really even knowing about this was last year, late last year, we met, Tom and our staff met to look at this and see what was going on. But with them dissolving the water association, there's nobody to take care of this lift station. Naturally, in new subdivisions or any subdivisions, like any new ones that we have right now, we do own and maintain those lift stations. So what they're asking for is for us to take the ownership of the lift station. It is located from what we could tell within the right way, is that correct Jim?
It's located, appears to be located within the right way. But if we take ownership of that, then we have the capabilities a lot more and most to be able to maintain that. It is not set up with any electronics like digital reading or anything like that. It's a very, very basic pump station. They actually found that with that pump, the pump was big enough or so big in there for forcing water out that they actually somehow got a log in to it that's been in there for years. I think that log has probably been in there for thirty, forty years or better to actually keep that pump in place so it doesn't thrust out of the place. So it's an interesting combination, but it works.
No one takes credit for that.
So I don't know, but I think we were all impressed on that one. I think we were puzzled on how they got the log actually into that lift station. So long story short, your request was for us to take over that lift station. Typically, we would own, maintain those lift stations. So what we're asking for is council to allow us to take on that lift station.
I mean, the question is, is there any funds that are remaining out of that water fund that? I mean, it's one of those things where, okay, yeah, we take it over, which completely understand it would make sense for us to own that and it fails next week for whatever stupid reason.
There are no records of it.
Nor are.
I've been trying to find it, I even called a couple of pumps suppliers just to see if there was any record of it and there's not, so.
So it was, it's been there a long time and it's probably been replaced, has it ever been?
It was replaced and so I can't find great records, but what I do have is QuickBooks. In ninety-seven, we spent eighty-one hundred dollars, before I even lived in the development, with United Plumbing, Heating and Excavator. Anybody familiar with that?
Are they even in business anymore? Are they even in business anymore?
I don't think so, but anyways, so they replaced from what I could tell, and this is what I'm pretty sure, the line going north in the public right away and then it cuts across into the river and it's somewhat of an angle. That line was replaced at that point in like, we paid the bill in November of ninety-seven. So it has had a rebuild.
Twenty years, yeah, it's twenty years, twenty plus years, so. At least it had a little bit of maintenance, you know.
Yeah, it's a pretty simple system, I mean, it does literally break or hold a pump and a pipe.
And this is in a residential drainage area, there's nothing nearby that would potentially cause issues with the state health department because it's going into the river or anything like that, far as we know.
I, I don't know of anything.
It's just one of those things where we don't know what we're getting ourselves into.
I reached out to the Water Resource District and they didn't have any record of it.
Yeah.
That was a couple of weeks ago, they actually thought I was, they sent me some stuff on the home in addition.
So that's, that's my concern, what's our risk?
Yeah.
Right, I, I have no issue that we should be owning it and taking care of it, but now we're taking care of something that we're gonna have to fund. If something goes wrong with it and it was an unplanned expense, then what's that mean?
Yep.
Yeah, from a funding standpoint, well, so what we have, the situation when we're paying about seventy-two thousand dollars to switch over to Caserole water, we're not quite done with the process yet, will there be some money left? I think so, I think, but I mean, we're talking in the neighborhood of like a couple of grand.
Yeah, it's only minimal.
It's not, not substantial, but.
You're within the contingency of just getting the Caserole water replaced. And that was the original plan for that fund, right, is all the, everyone was paying into that fund to be able to pay for the water, maintaining this well and this sewer or this storm sewer?
No, it's, so our articles of incorporation for our LLC that is, we have a nonprofit, Sleepy Hollow Water Company, our articles of incorporation only state that we provide drinking water for the twenty-five homes in our development. This pump system just kind of got added on somehow. Most people in our development don't even know it's there. Even though about somewhere north of half of our people's water drain that way. Fortunately, my water doesn't, so good either way. That's the dynamic that we have, you know, so most people aren't aware of the system and really, I mean, if I want the people to try to collect money for a drainage system, they'd be.
Right, right.
They'd understand as much of all of it as what you guys knew right now, not much.
But, but the, everyone is contributing to that LLC to fund any water improvements or fixing or that needed to be done there, right?
Yeah, for our well system.
Right, right, so now is that LLC being dismantled?
Yeah, yeah.
Once Caserole water goes in?
Yeah, I started the paperwork today with Department of Health for the whatever dislination or whatever, with the Secretary of State to dissolve that because we know.
Don't water it in it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Jim, how different is this pump system from all the other pumping mechanisms that we have in town here?
It's pretty similar, it's just that it's a simpler system, so it means it has one pump instead of two pumps in it. Most of the, well, I should take that back, sanitaries have two, most of storms, I guess, just have a single pump in it within the city. So it's no different than what's over on Southwood Drive. Low, low spot, water runs through it, it gets pumped out into the, into the river. And they are in the city, so I guess if you have to do anything major to it, you could assess that area back too.
I'm just more thinking, do we, if something needs to be fixed there, is that something that we have parts for or is this a newer?
No.
Side by newer, it's a different animal that we gotta get different pieces of parts for?
So there's a, it's a Peabody Barnes was the serial number that I was able to find out of last week and I called around and not many people knew of Peabody Barnes, so.
Gotcha. I'm just saying, like what Brian was saying, if the thing goes south, then we're gonna have to go get new, a lot of new things, it's looking like. It's just all cool, you're not gonna walk into Walmart and get a replacement.
No, no. I mean, the panel looks like it's got the same components, it's just.
It's a very, very simple pump station, it's literally a pump.
Yeah, I do, I get that.
So.
But I'm just saying, we can't take one out of our shop to bring it in here, hook the thing up.
But we don't, we don't keep that stuff on the end anyways, so it's.
There haven't been high water events or high rain events, there haven't been issues with that pump failing or having issues?
Two thousand nine was the last year that any repair was done. And we had, we had a failure of the pump, so we pumped it out with two-inch pumps into the river. And then we had a All-American fix it.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, it's really only a problem when the river's hot.
Right.
Because otherwise it gravity drains the entire time, so it's really just an event in the spring if we want to get water out of our development. I mean, the nice thing is that the water can't flow out of development, it will flow over into the, through the drainage on the east side of our development first and go through on sunny side and that direction and out then through the river. So even if that pump failed and you don't have parts, you're kinda.
Get backup, it's a backup plan then per se.
Yeah, you know, if the water's high and it fails.
Okay.
It falls out.
That was my only concern, is if something, we're in the middle of something and I don't have parts here because it's different stuff.
So eventually it will have to be, become on the list to standardize with the other pump, but for right now, we don't need to do that.
To give you an idea, Tom sent me a letter here the other week and talked, he just talked about the costs. Electric bill, they're paying just under thirty-seven dollars a month. The average electric bill is thirty-seven dollars a month for that. Other than that, costs, they're, what he was referring to, about ten years ago, they put five hundred and sixty dollars into fixing it. So it's still, they had put a whole lot of costs into maintenance or repairs, so.
But I agree with Brian, I mean, it's something we're probably gonna wind up taking over, I just wanna make sure we got our eyes wide open here when we walk into this 'cause it's a different animal, what we're dealing with, but.
So.
I make a motion that we bring in the Sleepy Hollow lift station under management by the city.
That's what I call it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Brian, it's a second. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Sorry.
You give me that weird look of like, okay, did I do something wrong?
No, all good.
Can I get this quick?
Oh.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to number ten here.
Okay. This next item, talking about wire treatment and infrastructure survey. Two meetings ago, so first meeting in June, I believe it was, we were talking about doing a survey about wire treatment and what users would like to see. Our staff, we started talking about, okay, different questions here to find out, who are people's providers? How do they feel about water, the wire quality, what is their biggest concerns? We know there's discoloration at times, there's taste at times is an issue. Trying to prioritize, what are the biggest issues, concerns that they have? What I have a question for you, for the council, is do you have any questions in particular you'd like us to ask? Our goal is to get a survey out by the end of the week. We'd have available online and then also we'd have a paper copy available so that way if folks do not want to fill it out online, they're able to do it on, you know, stop by Say Hall and fill out a paper copy. We have a lot more foot traffic in Say Hall due to the P O boxes here. So it makes it a little easier for folks, if they don't want to do it online, they can do that here and then we'll just take it and process it, that way we have it recorded. But like I said, I really am looking for if you had any areas in particular beyond focusing on water quality and then the other questions that we have are focusing on rates. A lot of cities have been increasing their rates. I actually found this interesting, I didn't even notice that Fargo did until today. Fargo, for example, their rate for thousand, cost per thousand gallons went up to four dollars and forty cents for their users. That's just if you're in Fargo, that was a lot cheaper before. West Fargo increased their rates. Their base rate in West Fargo is seven dollars, but then cost per thousand gallons is seven dollars. Kindred is up in that ballpark, theirs mirrors more Caserole, but about a dollar more per thousand gallons is what they charge. Caserole is, I believe, twenty-eight dollars for base and five forty, at least in that ballpark. So we'll, we'll ask some questions about rates, like would you like to see a larger base and a lower cost per thousand? Or would you like to see a lower cost per thousand and a higher cost, or lower, higher cost per thousand and a lower base? So there's different ways folks could look at it based on their needs of usage. If I was to use, if I was to have the costs like West Fargo structure, if I have a household that only uses two thousand gallons of water, well, that's probably going to be more favorable for me. If I have a larger household, we use, you know, quite, you know, at least four, five thousand, six thousand gallons of water, you might get at that point where a higher base and lower cost per thousand is more favorable. But everybody has their different preferences, what they like to see. So we're, our plan is to ask that question too. Like I said, looking to see if there's anything on your mind that you would want to know in a survey from the users so we could try to get that information. Just looking for ideas from you, if you have anything beyond what we're looking at.
I mean, those were, those were two main, when we talked about this, Ben and I talked about this earlier, those were the two main topics because it was rate structure, because, I mean, having a higher rate affects those that are higher water usage, but I don't think we have a lot of residents, you know, that are high water users. So I don't, you know, I think we wouldn't, it wouldn't make as much sense for us to go that route, but it's a good question. Right, to just get feedback from us.
I guess the side to me is, is when you look at that, when you just named off the three, you're, yeah, you're right, it's twenty-seven bucks a month minimum. Isn't, isn't your minimum charge just the cost of having the system? I mean, to be able to, to be able to hook up and get water has a cost to it.
Part of the cost, but also putting money away for repairs.
Correct, that's my saying, it's kind of like, keep the lights on, costs this much. That's basically what our base charge.
The cost of delivery.
The base charge or the service charge or whatever you want to call it should be that cost and then the usage is above that, so. Right, I mean, I'll give you the example of somebody that uses only two thousand gallons in West Fargo, I think that's crazy. I mean, there's a cost for me to put all this infrastructure and all this pipe, all the equipment, all that kind of stuff to guarantee that you get water.
Yep.
But they're probably recovering that from the old users that are really heavy water users.
Correct, but that seems very biased in my.
Oh, absolutely.
Versus we all have a fair share that we have to cover to get the results.
I kind of see it too though, where if you're lower income, you have the opportunity then to save some money and be more smart about your water. If you can afford to use a lot of water, then you're gonna pay more to use a lot of water. I mean, some people don't have the, you can't pay their bills every month.
For what you're talking about, yes, typically your base is to cover your cost operations. And the state will look at it for like S R F funding, state revolving loan funding, they're gonna look at your base and go, okay, do you have adequate base? Now, we might find a situation where maybe we're kind of in between like West Fargo and Caserole. It might be a situation where we go, okay, our basis increase right now, we're at twelve dollars for our base, but cost per thousand is only three dollars. It might be where we have that go up a little bit and then the cost per thousand goes up just a little bit. So we're just trying to get, just an idea of what, what is of interest more to the users and just get another perspective. That's just gonna give you their, their input and we don't know who's gonna respond to the survey. We might have a hundred people respond, we might have three hundred, might have five people. We don't know for sure what our responses are going to be, but we're gonna try and encourage to get that feedback from them.
The interesting part about it is, we should really be filtering out any people that don't receive water from Caserole directly.
And we do have a question on there.
From Morris, you mean?
The people that live in Morris, that if they receive Caserole water, they're not, their vote really doesn't matter.
But I think you could ask, that's why the question you could ask, you know, that way you can go right away, it's not your second or first question.
Yeah, we have a couple of questions like that.
Filters.
And one idea we're looking at is to encourage participation, we could, we could send out like a postcard or something or just somehow blast out information to the folks about the survey is available online. We'd send that to just the actual customers for water to Morris, those are just different ideas. We're trying to encourage folks to respond to it. I know they're going to be, probably seeing it's very simple questions, but it's just to get a general pulse of anything else that folks are seeing.
Is there a place on there where people can mark if they're happy with the water?
Yeah, we have.
That way, you know, it gives them, okay, if they're not happy with it, you're gonna have to pay more, you know, so they'll make that known.
Yep, and we have that as one of our draft questions, but yes, we'll include that.
Cause I don't think anybody would probably take that one.
Well, there are, I actually talked to a couple of people that, oh yeah, there's, the water's just fine. Like, what, really? You, you live in town? Okay. Hold my mind.
Yep.
But.
It's what you grew up with.
Exactly.
Yep.
You got any?
No, I think. Go with the questions. I mean, we don't, I don't want twenty questions either.
Nope.
Just keep it, keep it short.
Five or six, seven.
So the update for you then is, we expect to have the survey out before the end of the week and we'll have it up for a few weeks and try to get participation from residents.
Maybe include a link on the next water bill or something like that.
Yeah, if we keep it open, it might be one of those, keep it open on the water bill and we could do something there, so, yep.
Okay. All right, so we'll go with that one. All right, under land use ordinance amendment, who wants that one, Barrett?
Yeah.
Start that one, all right.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Get me something. Okay. And if you wouldn't mind going to our next slide, next one. Number one, there you go, all right, thank you. And so this application is a continuation from last week, no comments have been received since the last meeting. At the direction of the council, staff made a comparative analysis of how other cities in this metro implement public notification processes. And as you'll see on the table, there's a variation at the, which distance the surrounding properties are notified. When we kind of looked at this table, staff kind of decided maybe more appropriate for us to lean more towards the five hundred foot requirement just because of some of the sizes of the lots out here. Of course, that's at your discretion, what would value you'd like to choose, but we just kind of figured that would be our recommendation that we would find appropriate. So this is also kind of in lieu of some of the other direction we're given about public notification processes and improving those processes and making them transparent. We figured not only could we change this distance value, but we could also start posting applications online, so the public has I guess more earlier notification of the processes involved. Some other ideas that we've come up with is posting signs in, on the properties that are affected by these applications, where we'd have the applicant post the sign on property of whichever development application that they're applying for. So other than that, no other changes were made to the proposed language. And staff recommends the text amendment as proposed on our phone screening in the staff report.
So it's essentially eliminating this preliminary, so it's just a subdivision plat meeting, so.
Yeah, there's.
Getting down to one plat review meeting.
Yeah, just a.
And it's just a notification.
Right, so just kind of to reiterate, we're adding criteria for when you need a plat with an exemption section, removing a preliminary plats and then modifying language of plat requirements, so it syncs up with the rest of the, so anyway, it's talking.
I mean, if we made it five hundred foot, like you talked about, is that gonna make that much of a difference in terms of the number of quantity? It's not, it's not gonna change the cost of that notification, how would it change the cost?
The cost of materials would increase if you're notifying more properties, especially if you're in a more dense, heavy dense geographical area.
Sure.
Then maybe staff time to physically put those envelopes together, but I think with some of our developments that have large lots, I don't think you'll really see that big of an impact, but you'll see a better notification process for those areas.
I was gonna say, I mean, three hundred seems plenty, but I think you always should have the discretion as the, as the city to go, we're so close to another ring of houses that are within fifty feet or something or whatever.
You want to round up.
Please go ahead and send them something, I mean, I don't think it should be hard and fast, it's just, this is our minimum. It's three hundred and we at the discretion.
Luke has got some legal advice here.
Well, so our office does it, when we send out the notices, it's our office that does it. When I redid this, I thought you guys had said, just go back to the three hundred. So the way the ordinance is wrapped in now, it has three hundred in it. But like Barrett said, that's at your discretion, if you guys want to put that five hundred, that's fine. Just know that that's a potential to increase this to a lot.
A lot of schools, right.
And that it will be, there will be more cost to it because then we're just adding that many more homes that we need to know if I find out what actually owns.
Right.
Parcel, what the mailing address is, and make sure that they get the notice and they're doing this for.
Three hundred feet is basically, it's not even a block, right? Is it about one city block?
And then all the way around it.
If I get yelled at from our citizens because we're spending an extra, let's say this comes out to be a half a percent of our yearly budget to communicate changes to properties and, and plats and all this kind of stuff, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall over. It's the moment we don't communicate that we are just gonna get yelled at. If I get yelled at because I'm over communicating, then I'm doing my job.
But that's why we kicked it up from one fifty to three hundred to get more people involved in.
I mean, I'm, I just, we still have to have, they should have the discretion, I mean, there's, we're hired them to, if you feel you need another extra few people to make sure you've covered the base.
Well, and sometimes we are.
It's a minimum, yeah, yeah, you're doing that, but a minimum of three hundred.
They ask me if they should just add more and say, yes, just do it. But that's within.
Right, I mean.
A smaller, a smaller all day.
I'm not talking a quarter mile.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you, I mean, it's, it's, you're at three hundred feet, you got somebody within fifty foot of it, let's do it, but if somebody's three hundred more feet, okay, come on, you're getting a little extreme, so. But I think the other pieces that have been discussed, such as the sign on the street or on the location will be a tremendous amount of one because you'll drive by them and keep seeing the sign that says. If we have a consistent spot on the website where you put these applications that we can always point people to it, would be another one and I don't even want to go further than that.
So getting into that type of recommendation, that's where I thought that, that benchmark or that checklist, that's where something like that would play into, add it to that and then that will ensure that the developer knows that they have to put that sign out, that's part of the requirement to, to plats this.
Sure.
If that's something that the city wants to do, but I just want this all on paper, that way.
Right, so we know why.
Here's this, this list, the benchmarks that you need to meet, one of which is to put that sign up on a property.
I mean, in some regards, there is an additional cost, but on the other hand, we're plotting that so that we factor some of that cost into the plat fees itself. Right, that, that typically should go back to the developer, whoever's plotting that land shouldn't be funding that cost and that notification. So whether we're over communicating, I, I agree with you David, I would much rather over communicate than under communicate and that's, that's my greatest fear here, is that we're, by changing the, yes, we're doubling the notification distance.
Right.
But we're trying to put other steps in place that we can be consistent and also make sure that we're communicating, but we're reducing the number of notifications from two to one. So there's fewer opportunities for residents to find out about this.
But I would say that I think even though we had modifications and. But I would say that I think even though we had notifications and even though they were sent, I mean, they were only in a paper mostly, and we tried to do other things, I'm sure, but now if we're, we're really getting down to a consistent process and we can, and do it every time, and they're doing it every time, then that's, we can reiterate to our citizens, that's what we're doing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To touch on the, having the developer pay for the cost of the notice, I absolutely do think that the developer should be responsible for that. And right now it's just getting taken out of the, that initial fee. But remember, a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, we discussed that agreement where the developer would, uh, pay for the costs that the city is seeing for this, um, and I believe that that just got tabled.
Yeah.
Discussion on that?
It got tabled and we're, we are communicating, because developers reached out to us with their concerns, so we were listening to what they had to say, to just see their feedback, so we communicated back to the council, so, uh, but we were looking at our options of it, so we're still, we still need to bring it back for discussion.
But that's not part of this ordinance, that whole funding mechanism is part of this.
No, no, I'm just tying this all together, get a picture on this, because this is the various things that the city's working on right now that are all affecting developments and, um, just trying to tie it all together.
Yep, so one thing I would do want to point out is the distance actually, and I, I was believing at first it was three hundred too, and then Barrett just pointed out to me it was five, it's actually five hundred.
Cause I saw this, I saw this five hundred.
So we did bump it up even more there than what we originally anticipated. Um, five hundred feet, that's pretty far out there compared to a lot of others, which is, which is nothing wrong with that. Uh, we have the ability in our own process to expand more, like you were talking about. The other thing is notifications, when you're talking notifications, before we had a hundred fifty feet. The only people that ever get a notice, like a mail out or anything, it's just in that hundred fifty feet. Otherwise, you have to be watching the newspaper to know anything. And so really what we're doing is trying to cut our, cut our costs on some areas, the cost will increase in others, it's almost a wash probably, based on newspaper publications versus increasing mail out due to distances. But then we have the sign, so we're improving our process, that, that's the end game, what we're looking at. And so we do feel that we'd be getting probably more people notified of the development and activity going on. But at the same time, we'd be reducing our costs, our costs at city level and the developers' costs, our engineers' time, our legal time. We'd be reducing that quite a bit because we wouldn't have to be going through the plat review.
Twice.
Twice, we would just put heavier emphasis on that final plat. And I think it would also reduce the situations where a developer would come, not have their development thoroughly thought through, because they know that we, they know before with the preliminary plat, well, we're gonna have to work that through with the city, where if they submit something that is not even acceptable to review yet, we could just kick it back and say it's incomplete application, three ordinances, kick it back. Um, so it makes it a lot easier to where we're able to kick it back to the developer and say, go back to the drawing board, get this cleaned up, so. Just wanted to weigh the pros and cons that I saw, and reiterate what Barrett was emphasizing on.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so we have a public hearing on this too, right Liam?
We already did last time.
We did last time.
See, it's sitting on here, so I'm making sure. Okay, so is anything else you guys want to talk about with this?
So is the recommendation five hundred feet or three hundred?
Uh, five hundred at this time, but it's your discussion whether you like that or not, number value.
Okay, I think three hundred is plenty.
With, with discretion, coming back to this.
I don't, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, whether it's three or five hundred, so, I mean.
I, I'm fine with three hundred as well, I just hope that, and I don't know how we can make sure that with the discretion, the letter gets, gets out to a lot of people, you know, like, um, Dreamfields. It probably should have went to everybody because those cars are going, you know, past everybody's house, kind of, it's kind of, that was kind of a big deal, so.
So, so with Dreamfields, they, or, Dreamfields or Rivers Edge Two?
Well, Rivers Edge Two.
So Rivers Edge Two was what's in the letter that went out to those property owners, telling them to inform their, their neighbors of.
Yeah, but that was just following the hundred foot thing.
But so that went above beyond the hundred fifty foot, which is what the order said.
Yeah, I, I think we did go more than, than just the one fifty.
So it's, it's going to be at our, at our discretion, depending on the development, you know, and the size of lots.
I know they made some comments, like, wasn't the only one that got a letter, my neighbor shouldn't get a letter. I don't know, you know, that was.
We'll always have those.
Yeah, that was.
We're always gonna have exceptions to this.
That's why I think the, the idea you guys have of the sign, and if we have a one reoccurring spot, that's just on our website, if anybody has any questions, we can continue to say to residents, go to this location, go to this location. And if you're within the boundary and at a discretionary close, we'll notify you.
I guess I'm okay with three hundred. I think that's a reasonable number.
So I'll make a motion to approve the amended plat requirements for land use with using three hundred foot as a recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, Brian made a motion, Dave did a sec. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Passes again.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have one request for Barrett and Brenton then, is once you guys figure out the checklist or the process or these key things you're going to do, can you just bring it back to the council and let us know what the changes you've made and how we're gonna make sure we communicate.
Yep.
Those additional things.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that checklist is, uh, the benchmarks, so we've changed it from checklist to benchmark, so that's done already. It just hasn't been brought to the council for final approval of it, but I think Barrett and I might have some changes based on, uh, some ordinances that we, the council has passed in the past two years, and it might actually change, um, that benchmark, but then possibly the ordinances can, just so you're aware.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that coming at some point here.
Okay. Yep.
Sounds good. All right, twelve's off the table on the thirteen, SAR second edition.
So it's the same, it was just a different, the PowerPoint was backwards.
Oh, no, I, I don't have the slides for this.
I was just looking at this like, what is going on here? Okay.
We've looked at this.
Okay, Lucas, you got this one.
There, thank you.
Yeah, SAR second edition, uh, this is the second reading of the zoning change from R one single family residential to, uh, SR suburban residential, uh, for the SAR second edition. Staff hasn't received any comments since the last public hearing and, uh, staff recommends, uh, currently as stated in the staff.
I'm assuming Russ is good with it too then, right?
Yeah.
Should we make him wait?
Look at him, he's grumpy about it. He's already grumpy about it.
Can't read that math.
He might be smashing.
He could be sticking his tongue out.
I'll, I'll make am signs. No, we don't want you to.
We're in a public forum, Russ.
Keep it friendly, keep it child friendly.
Okay, anybody got any questions on this one? I mean, I think it's pretty much cut and dried, nothing changed, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the second edition result.
Second, Dave, or excuse me, Brian? Sorry? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, I'll call you Frank.
Okay.
All right, on to the next one, Lucas.
So Mr. Mayor, I will take this one, um, you'll recall the city council approved, uh, an over dimensional vehicle policy, um, a few meetings ago, and part of that, uh, policy discusses permits, uh, and restrictions for overweight vehicles, over dimensional vehicles. Uh, so I was going through the city's ordinances, uh, council, very comfortable with the ordinances and compared it to the policy uh, that was enacted and, and see if there's any ordinances, uh, that need to be revised or anything. And the city council has, already has a lot of, the city already has a lot of the ordinances that regulate, uh, over dimensional vehicles based on state statute, but what it didn't have is these two sections that are the penalty sections, and that's because the city doesn't have or didn't have, um, this whole court, uh, so they didn't enforce any of this stuff, they just went to the county. So I, it's my recommendation that these two penalty provisions be added, uh, into the city's ordinances. That way if there is an issue with, uh, any permits or any vehicles that are oversized, then, uh, we can refer to this penalty section and then, uh, turn it over to the municipal judge for, uh, prosecution.
Yeah, this is just some tightening up of things for the city.
It's ensuring that the city will get compensated for, for any penalty violations rather than going to the county.
Now that we officially have a judge on site, that makes it.
But the amount, twenty dollars?
It's that here.
What? Uh, uh, that's, has no teeth.
It's like a small speeding ticket.
That's, yeah, for somebody that's hauling something that's oversized, they don't care.
Well, that's still destroyed the road. That's just for one, there's, uh.
That's your lowest level.
There's a different section that's already in ordinance that addresses, um, violations for overweight vehicle, I believe.
Well, yeah, but it's twenty dollars here, it says twenty dollars here.
Can't they lose their CBL or get in trouble with their license if they're getting?
There's a different process that's already in your ordinances that addresses this whole process where the fees are actually higher.
So.
These two are, uh, the one's twenty dollars, the other's a hundred, isn't it?
I didn't see a hundred, I.
And I don't have my book here, so I.
I believe, these are the most severe, uh, traffic related penalties that you could give. Not what you're seeing right there, but overweight, based on the state. I know like the county, for example, when they do citations for overweight, you're talking thousands of dollars.
Cause it's based on how much weight it's over.
Yeah, so it's, I, I recall we were covered by our ordinance, because I know some of our deputies have been pulling over some of those overweight vehicles, and I know one of them, they did issue a citation, I think at the county level, but they did issue a citation horse here this about a month or two ago, about a month, month and a half ago, they issued one. And we're talking that citation was in the thousands of dollars, so, I mean, they're not little, and.
Well, but that's for if they're driving in County Seventeen, but if they have to turn off on Wall Avenue, and that's where the deputy pulled them over, they would be subject to this, twenty dollars.
That's the very basic one.
I know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to pull up your, the other one.
They, they, so the hundred dollar fee is there, but it's only that if they didn't have a permit. So do we have a process in place for them to request a permit?
We have a permit.
Do they actually request that permit?
We have had one company actually ask for a permit. Yes, it's a little concerning, but that's why we've.
You know, all the people are over.
Oh, that's, that's why the, that's why the deputies and the truck unit are present in town on occasion, so. We've asked them to make sure they have a presence here and probably a little bit more than typical, just cause it is, you know, we have it signed.
I would argue with the amount of development that's happening and the number of heavy vehicles that are driving in town, that we need some bigger teeth in these ordinances.
Yep.
Or fines, so that, because we're gonna have to fix those roads, and this is.
Yep.
I'll use wall as exhibit eight.
Exactly. And that's exactly what happened last year, right?
Yep.
Okay, so Lucas, just so you can write this down in your notes, I'll open up the public hearing on this, just so you're covered here. Anybody got any more comments?
You need it for, for this type of ordinance, because it didn't have to go to the planning commission?
Okay, well, I'm just going to what it says in front of me here.
Yeah, this way.
I mean, the ordinance that the city already has in place to.
Did you guys have any other questions on it?
That, that, my only concern is that the fee is too low.
And that you're capped by a century code. And it says that you have to use.
Also, it is.
So it's not like a per pound or anything?
We, we cast our own.
That's for the oversized though, right? We have a different related to weight.
I believe it's in the same area.
That's what I'm saying.
But overweight, we had the overweight, but he's not, you know, he's addressing the oversize. There's, those are two different components, actually. Yeah, you're, you're talking length, over dimension, so you're talking if it's a wide load or if it's too long, um, you won't.
If somebody's moving a building, if somebody's moving a building in town, they have to get a permit.
If you're moving a house and you don't have a permit, which the permit is very cheap.
Right.
Uh, yeah.
It's like a backhoe, backhoes are usually a wide load.
Yep. Where you're overweight, I believe it's actually a different area, so he's talking size and weight, but those are over dimensions.
The weight is where we got this graduated payment thing.
So I think we're all in agreement that we need to have fines, it's just a matter of, let's, let's set the amount at the correct level so that if we can, I would say, argue that we should max it based on the state statute.
Twenty bucks.
If that's what it is, that's what it is, I mean, that's all we can do.
It is, I pulled this directly from.
Yeah.
All right, then it is what it is, damn it.
Sorry, miss.
So, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the ordinance change to oversized, overweight, oversized ordinance.
Okay.
The second.
Brian made a motion, Chelsea did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, infrastructure projects, Brenton, you got this one.
Sure, go ahead.
It's so hard to reach out my phone. Okay, so, so if it is for just overweight, then if it's, uh, if it goes to trial, then it's, um, one cent per pound for each pound of weight in excess, uh, up to three thousand pounds and four cents per pound, eight cents per pound, ten cents and twenty cents per pound. So that's where you're getting, it's based on that weight, but the other, the one that we just did is for over dimensional or for other ones, that if they don't have a permit or something, uh, then you charge them that, but, yeah, I knew that the, the city has it already for overweight, and that's where you're getting the money is put in there.
Yeah.
And it's, we're more concerned about the overweight than the overall size.
Right, because that's what's damaging your road.
That's just doing the roads.
Okay, and that is actually what Lucas referred to, that is in our policy tied to the overweight vehicles and over dimensional, so, uh, he was just cleaning up the gaps within ordinance.
Sure, basically just more penalty provisions that the city can have at its disposal if it's not just an overweight vehicle.
Yep.
Sorry, that takes a while.
Hey, we got it, we're all good. Okay, so we'll move along fifteen here.
Okay. Okay, let me grab my spreadsheet here. So what we're looking at is different infrastructures, projects for the city this year. We did this around this time last year, uh, where we tackled Long Park and Third Park and Fourth, we did some drainage improvements. So these are typically not huge projects, we do have one, a little bit more significant size, that'll bring up in just a minute. But most of these projects are not very big, but they're very helpful to the community. Uh, last year, we also, around this time, took, had, council took action to have us do the overlay or the mill overlay, second lift in, uh, Prairie View. So what we're facing is we have another area that is due up for that, it's been long overdue, uh, so we're proposing that too. The first item I had is, that very project is the Roots Edition, so where you'd have the daycare, hair salon, uh, Red River, you know, those properties up there. The second lift has not been put on that road. The assessment district, the payments of it is almost, they're almost even all done. Uh, that development's been around for, I want to say close to ten years, Jim, if that makes sense, or probably more. Uh, but anyways, like I said, they haven't had the second lift done on the road. So we're proposing is knock out that second lift. We were going to wait to see what happened with Greeley, to see if that was going to take any traction. That's been pretty much on the back burner, if not, I don't know if it'll happen or not. Uh, so we're looking at, let's get the second lift done, get the road fixed. Um, there is money left over in that account, the cost estimate is seventy thousand dollars to do that little bit of milling, patching, overlay, uh, we have about forty-five, well over forty-five thousand left in that special assessment fund for that project, so the advantage for that is to get that improvement done that was supposed to occur quite a while back, and also zero the special assessment fund. The other project of size is addressing Sunny Side, Woodland Circle, the whole neighborhood doing, um, asphalt patching, gap mastic, which is like filling in large cracks, that really isn't feasible to do an asphalt patch on. And then chip seal with a fog seal on top of it, now a fog seal, what that does is it basically coats the chip seal right away, so you don't get it all dusty and you don't get little chip rocks all off into the ditch. We have an open ditch up there along Sunny Side, so we don't need a bunch of that chip rock into the ditch there. Uh, that project, the cost estimate for it is a hundred ninety thousand dollars, it's a pretty good sized project. This was area of concern last year when we were doing the roundabout project, uh, in seventy-six. We had a lot of concerns, feedback brought up from residents on that. Uh, in seventy-six, we had a lot of concerns, feedback brought up from residents on that. This was a location that this project was on the radar, we were looking at needing to perform this project anyway, so what we're asking for is to tackle that one. We also have various locations for street patching, basically larger potholes that we can't use a cold patch for. We have to do a hot mix, so make it a little more durable, um, for patching jobs. Uh, Rivers Edge, this is an area that residents have come to us before. Uh, talking about when the river is up, the river comes in and fills in the ditches and it won't drain. Uh, what we are proposing is to put in stop logs and block that off for when the river goes up, it stops that flow. And it doesn't fill in as bad. Uh, Rivers Edge, that drainage, uh, we estimate the cost by the time we work on manhole and do those stop logs, we're looking around twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, that won't solve all of our problems at Rivers Edge. However, we anticipate when Rivers Edge second edition will come online or be tackled, then we'd be able to resolve quite a bit of the storm water issues in the, in that neighborhood with that project or that develop, the second edition. Greyhawk, there's a replacement of a sluice gate structure across assessments around six thousand dollars. Uh, that would help improve the drainage in there, cause that sluice gate is broken. We have, or the structure that we have right there is broken. Um, Adelman's addition, right away cleanup. What this is, is what we found, is another headache or issue that we found in Adelman's. Uh, we had a, we were contacted by a resident recently about, they had a bunch of large chunks of concrete in their yard. And we're trying to help them troubleshoot what was going on. And we found an area, a little smaller than half the size of this room. Basically from the curb line going to about fifteen, twenty feet back, where it was just solid concrete. We're going, what's going on here? We come to find out, and Jim actually found a little picture of this, where there was a whole concrete washout and the contractor didn't remove. He just scraped off the concrete that was mounted up and buried it. So there was about five, six inches of fill on top of it. So when this individual contractor just wanted to do a sprinkler system, he couldn't get through. Uh, typically in a situation like that, if we found that, like on a construction project that we have going on right now, we'd be making the contractor replace it or take care of it. A contractor isn't in business anymore, that contractor is not around, there have been a lot, there's been some lawsuits even tied to that. Contractor and developer, um, in that area, so. The cost for that is fifteen hundred dollars and talking with the, the homeowner. Uh, what I told him, I propose is that we would tackle that fifteen hundred, because the city would have had the developer or the contractor take care of that. Being it's in there right away, our concern is just take care of it. Uh, but then they indicated, the resident indicated that they would, they would take care of the seeding and costs like that. So what we would do is remove the concrete and just fill it in with some dirt. Uh, that fifteen hundred is a cost estimate from a contractor to do that work, uh, that's been very, and that contractor's been very dependable for us. Uh, and then the last area they had for improvements and proposing tonight is Sleepy Hollow, Sunnyside Drainage. And if you have any more detailed questions, any of these, Jim could probably elaborate more than I can. Uh, but it'd be the north side of seventy-six, where you have Sleepy Hollow and Sunnyside meet that ditch right there. It's basically doing some work along that to be able to improve the flow of water to get to the river. Cause we have some drainage problems in Sunnyside and Sleepy Hollow, at times mainly more in Sunnyside. That we get a lot of complaints of backup and this would help address that drainage issue. Uh, the cost estimate for that is five thousand, I don't know, did, did I cover that one?
Yeah, it's actually gonna be created, putting a T in the line, so that when the city, when the river's up, the gate's shut on Seventy-sixth Avenue and, uh, Sleepy Hollow kind of floods internally. This is installing a T and access point for the city to stick a pump in closer to the river, they don't have to pump it so far that way. Public Works requested that, you'll see right now if you go out that way, there's green hose shoved in the gate and a grate. They want to move that closer to the river, so it's easier to pump.
So that would help with the drainage there. Uh, we do recognize that there are a lot of other projects that we have pending or need further discussion. Some of them are large, like Wall Avenue or Eighth Avenue Truck Extension. Um, we also have the Old Ox Bow or by Northwood, Southwood. Those have deeper discussions tied to them, we anticipate to talk about that Old Ox Bow next council meeting. Uh, Jim has been working on that, looking at what are potential solutions, he's going to talk with staff of, we're gonna troubleshoot, okay. What are feasible options and then come back to council with a lot more information on that. Uh, so like I said, we do recognize we have a lot of other projects, um, we even have ones that we know are being petitioned by residents, uh, one is the Horseshoe Bend, uh, Riverdale area for sewer, sanitary sewer, uh, the Trailer Court. On the north end of town there, they had some changes in ownership to where they're looking at their options of how, what scale the project would actually be, how big, how involved is it? Um, so that one, we're waiting to hear back from them, but we anticipate that's gonna be a discussion in the near future. Uh, also, Dream Fields, there's some drainage issues on the south end. But this is another one impacted by Rivers Edge second edition, if Rivers Edge second edition happens, it makes more sense to address that project when we're doing that second edition. Um, and then we have a few others, just a drain, looking at master drainage plan. Uh, and then we have Lakeview first edition, Rivers Edge second, and then even a city hall discussion, so. We have a variety of, we have a lot, no shortage of projects to discuss, but a lot of them are deeper discussions and have a lot more involvement, so. Overall, we have for proposed projects. So the ones I've listed off, like I said, these are smaller projects, the one project that is of larger size is Sunnyside in Woodland Circle, that area, I'd be that whole neighborhood, that was a hundred ninety thousand. Total cost is three hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, we combined them all together. Forty-five roughly comes from the sales, or the, um, special assessment fund for Roots Edition. The total cost, the remaining cost would be proposed to be come from sales tax. That fund is intended for infrastructure improvements and economic development. At least seventy-five percent needs to be spent for infrastructure and up to twenty-five for economic development. Um, what we're looking at is, we have been saving quite a bit of that money, the sales tax money for contributions to larger projects, but we also recognize that we have needs for these smaller projects that need to be tackled too. Our highway fund, we're spending down our fund balance, so we're spending that down, which has been a good thing, cause we're able to accomplish a lot of needs, but we're slowing down on the spending down of that now. And also in future years, we'll talk briefly on this during the budget discussion, but our highway fund is the one fund that got hit the absolute hardest from COVID, is highway fund. Reason why is a lot of our highway fund funding came from gas tax, motor fuel tax there. And that dropped, the revenue dropped to under half, it's about, uh, revenue is about forty percent to what it was before. So they got hit really hard on that, that's across the whole state, across the whole country. People aren't traveling as much as they used to, obviously, so that impacts our revenue stream for highway fund. Uh, but like I said, we're proposing to be able to tackle this. Our fund balance and sales tax is, definitely has enough money to cover this. It's in excess of a million dollars, it's around one point three, one point four. We do anticipate to be spending, you know, when we do, uh, figure out the special assessment dish, or costs for the roundabout in seventy-six. We are looking at contributing some from the sales tax for that. But we also have a lot of revenue generators for our sales tax right now, like the construction of the high school, construction in middle school. Horse Elementary Expansion, possibly from my understanding, it's next year, plus all the houses growth and everything going on in our community, so we do have influx into our sales tax than what we normally have. Before those projects, we were pulling in about thirty thousand dollars a month and we have quite a few months now, like when again, our peaks. Last year, we were, we didn't make a hundred thousand. Uh, that was our best revenue month was just under a hundred thousand dollars, but that was just with the construction of middle school. Now we're gonna have the high school and middle school going on and other things going on too in our community, so. Anticipate here come August, September, we're probably going to be a lot higher in our revenue for sales tax, so. Uh, construction hasn't slowed down due to COVID, in Hor, at least in Horace. But if you had any questions regarding these projects, I can answer them, or if you had more detailed ones, Jim would be able to expand on those too.
Jim, anything you want to add or?
No, I, like Brenton said, last year, we took the opportunity to do some of these projects, third and fourth, Third and Fourth Street. This was a, it was a big one to get done, resident complained about the water on the roads last year, so I think knocking some of these out would be good. Rivers Edge Edition, that storm water structure, it's not gonna completely solve our problem, because they're still getting the internal flooding, but Rivers Edge Second will have storm sewer in on, which will help alleviate some of that, so. When we met last week with the design engineers on Rivers Edge Second, we made sure to get the desire to get the storm sewer as far into the first edition as we could. So that once those stop logs are in place, and if we would get a rain event, thankfully we haven't so far, it's just been river water backing up. Um, if we would get a rain event, it'd back up and then it would flow into Rivers Edge system, so.
On your list of projects, I mean, it's, we have these are smaller ones and we can tick off the list, but. It's, yeah, it's, there's more projects that we can tackle in one year, so unfortunately this. It's a compromise, I. And this is taking feedback from the Public Works guys and, and, uh, and the whole Sunnyside, Woodland Circle is something. I mean, we're showing some love for the folks that had to participate in the detour, right, and getting, getting their road repaired. So, I mean, it's a good thing from that standpoint, we knew the work need, it was on the list anyway, for doing some work on that, right, Jim? I mean, it was a street rehab project.
It's been identified since two thousand seventeen as a potential project for a chip seal.
Are we looking to get any repairs done to the roundabout?
We have a meeting tomorrow afternoon.
We have a walkthrough tomorrow and it, the cracks are going to be a definite topic of discussion.
If we have to close that down to get some repairs done, we better not do this work until after it's all done.
That actually brings up an interesting question. I've seen two accidents here in the last month and a half on Fifty Second Avenue Roundabout. Where I don't know what happened, but somebody drove right across and hit that concrete wall, drove up over top of it and damaged a bunch of trees and so forth inside. And I'm like, okay, I don't know if this guy was just completely drunk or what the heck is going on, but that concerns me. It reinforces that we should, it's a good thing that we put the, the roundabout in on Seventy-sixth Avenue, but.
We did not put a retaining wall in.
That's, I'm like, okay, retaining wall, you have more damage, you know, if somebody runs over it, but on the other hand, maybe that's a good thing. You know, cause I don't want some kid getting pegged by some, and it was ten o'clock in the morning. I drove by and somebody ran into the wall at ten o'clock in the morning and their truck was just smashed. I don't get it, so I'm worried about that, you know, granted, it's a maintenance thing, somebody runs into it, we gotta go fix it. But yet, it's a safety element as well. Much rather have them, if they're being dumb, run into a wall and get them off the road than have somebody get killed. I don't know, it's a trade-off, but, but you're saying it was purposely designed without that retaining wall?
From the experience of Fifty Second Avenue, that's what I have the department on it.
We can't, we can't stop everything, Brian, I mean.
I know.
We've reduced the state, we've reduced the potential for issues, because we have a roundabout versus it being a stoplight that somebody could have T-boned somebody or something like that when they weren't.
And taking down the retaining wall just adds a little bit.
I mean, we have some communication in terms of education, we have to do about that roundabout before school starts, because you see people who don't follow lines properly and. You know, two people are gonna go this way and one's not and they're gonna crash.
We, we could recirculate the video of Jay and Corey.
Yeah, exactly.
Or we go do another one, or, or we do a, how about a drone one where people are actually driving it? Where the drone sits up top and we can see the people doing the correct. But another topic. Like they put dividers on construction projects, right? Not a bad idea.
Like a Deline, you put Deline Haters.
Trust me, I see, I, I see everybody, I'm using the outside lane all the time and I see everybody just.
Easing, right?
Cutting across. And they, they get a polite, a polite log.
So are you looking for approval on this list?
So what I'd be looking for is approval.
Funding you stated.
What I'd be, yes, what I'd be looking for is approval of, uh, these projects, the Sunnyside Roots Edition, uh, various street patching, Rivers Edge Drainage, Greyhawk Drainage, Adelman's Right Way Cleanup and Sleepy Hall Sunnyside Drainage.
Dave makes a motion, Chelsea is the second. Roll call it, yep, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
So reiterating the funding for the chunk will be the sales tax.
Yes, we'd be using sales tax, if we can spend down the balance of the special assessment fund for Roots, we're going to spend down on that and zero that out and then we'll do sales tax rate of mania amount, so. And keep in mind, these are the estimates, we're in, obviously get our best, the best parts that we can on them, so.
All right, moving along sixteen now, we can talk about the budget. Brenton, you got that one.
Yeah.
So nobody else wants to pick it up?
Yeah. So what I'm, do I really want to touch base on? We're, we're not, no, no, and I'm not, it's more of a discussion for the council of just overall where we're at with the budget. As I mentioned, just on the last item, COVID hit us hardest on highway fund. Highway fund had a drop, the projected revenues were anticipating to drop pretty good. It's going to be to where the general fund contributions for highway fund are in excess of a hundred thousand. Um, what we're looking at, I can find it here. Right now, in our draft budget, we have it just under a hundred twenty thousand dollars, hundred seventeen, eight thirty-six. This, just to give you an idea of what we're facing, now COVID didn't hit us in really any of the other areas, but general fund and highway fund. The reason also general fund has hit is because of state aid distribution. State aid distribution, this year, twenty twenty budget year is the first year that we started sharing that with the Park District and the Fire District. So we're giving some of that out, twenty percent total is, you know, ten percent to Fire, ten percent to Park District, and then we have eighty percent. That's what the city has been, or started doing effective for this current budget year. Next year, and was, when we did that budget for this year, it was expected that we would continue the same cost share. So we had a reduction in state aid and we had a reduction in highway fund. The motor fuel tax, that's where we're seeing the impacts of COVID. Everywhere else, all of our other funds, they've either been addressed, I'll take solid waste, solid waste. We're at a point now to where when we do a rate increase, it's going, we're going to be, we come back to you when our contract calls for a rate increase, we would say, okay, our contract is required increase of two percent. We're asking to mirror that increase, so it's just based on the increase that our contract waste management is. That's pretty stable now. Uh, vector, we've addressed that one with the rate increase, uh, going up from a dollar to two fifty. We feel those are, that's a fairly stable fund going into next year, or for next. We feel those are, that's a fairly stable fund going into next year or for next year's budget. Forestry has been a stable one, probably our most stable budget. We haven't done a whole lot yet with it, but we do have projects that are going to be coming to council, uh, eventually tied to that. We have sewer, sewer, we did our rate adjustments that just took effect. We recognize that we're going to eventually have to do some other rate adjustments, but we were able to get the sewer budget to balance out without any changes for next year. Keep in mind, we're not proposing a whole lot of capital improvements with the sewer budget.
So can you scroll up there?
Yeah.
I don't see the revenue.
Sorry. So.
So that is reflecting the, the expected usage, we're not expecting that the usage to increase, it's about the same as last year.
About the same.
About the same as last year, and this, this, so that's why this number is up by about fifteen thousand dollars with the new.
It, it would have been up a little higher, but what we budgeted in twenty twenty was, we anticipated a rate increase to occur earlier in the year. Uh, but instead our rate increases impact, so we anticipate our revenues aren't going to be as high for sewer than a hundred sixty for that line item. But that's all right because we're, we haven't had a lot of expenses tied to sewer. So we're all right there for this year and our goal is sewer to not go in. We're, we don't want to do a rate increase until we absolutely have to on sewer. And I think as we have stuff, we'll know more as we begin, we send more and more sewage to Fargo, then that rate would probably have some effects.
So that, that was the one thing I was gonna say is the, the amount that we would send to Fargo, there's gonna, that's gonna have to reflect in here somehow.
Yep, it is.
And also, um, the Benedict, St. Benedict.
Yep.
So there's some, I don't know if we're breaking that out as a separate line item, we're just lumping all that in the sewer charges.
That's lumped into the sewer charges. So that's reflected in the sewer charges, we don't break St. Benedict out.
So that's another part of the increase, a reason for the increase is we're now servicing more people than we were before.
Yep. Uh, what we would have in our service area, well, obviously a lot of, all of those new developments that we have coming on, or that will be coming online next, by next year. Um, if not even before then, you're gonna have Softdale, Law Service Fifth.
That's gonna, gotta play a model, right?
Cub, yeah, that's going to probably impact this, um, but we're trying to be, trying to be a little conservative, even though. It's hard to say exactly where we're gonna fall because of, it depends on how many building permits we're going to get. So, um, but anyways, sewer, we're not anticipating the rate increase again for a while. But we also need to know how sewer is just working out with Fargo. Um, water, we were able to get the water budget, I believe, to balance out. However, I am going to stress completely, our water rate is not adequate to handle our, the demands for improvement. All this is really addressing is the cost of operations and the minimal maintenance that we have. To give you an idea, this year, as of six thirty twenty twenty, the difference between revenue and expenses is forty six hundred dollars. If we have water, you know, a series of wire leaks, we had kind of spurt there, we had three wire leaks in a row. Those really hit us hard. Or last year, we had a situation where we had, last winter, we had a situation where we had a water leak and then we had a water tower freeze at the same time. That really hit us, that was a very, very expensive forty eight hour period. And your budget can be saying really good.
Capital outlay, right? That would be the capital.
That's typically, you know, it's your, in your capital or contractual, contractual is typically is where it is. Capital outlay would typically be for your improvements, so just replace the gate valve would fall under capital outlay. Versus your contractuals would be, um, addressing your wire leaks, getting a contractor to come help out. We don't, we're not equipped to be able to go address a lot of the water leaks internally. Uh, we don't have a mini excavator, we don't have the equipment to do that. So we typically con, we work with a couple of different contractors depending on their availability to help us address a water leak. So we brought in, for example, Fox or we brought in, uh, Dirt Dynamics, those are two examples of contractors we've worked with in the past to help us. And it's really, like I said, who's available at the time when that leak occurs. If we're able to program, you know, budget out when that repair occur, then we do. Or plan out, sometimes with a water leak, you may have a few days to be able to address it. Other times, you have where you have to be out there right away, it just depends on how bad it is. So, uh, with water, like I said. We're barely covering the cost of operations. This is really deferring any ma, any significant maintenance at all. We're defer, you know, we're not doing a whole lot on there and capital improvements, we're not doing capital improvements on this. Uh, I know that we're, we plan on talking more about water lines, replacements, things like that. Um, that's a whole nother conversation, but for an overall just operating, just where we're at, no improvement to our quality. This is where we'd be, so, uh, we'll be able to make adjustments to the utility enterprise funds. So any of your utility budgets, we can make adjustments to those. They're not impacted as crucial with timeline as our general fund is, so. Um. To show you sales tax really quick, I know I'm bouncing around a bit. Sales tax, we're anticipating revenue of six hundred thousand, I believe that is fairly conservative. Uh, right now, we're on track of three hundred fifty thousand, so, uh, we're anticipating that you double that. I believe it's actually gonna be higher than that, I think a sales tax revenue this year is going to fall around that seven to eight hundred thousand range, maybe even more. But we wanted to make sure we're being conservative on this because if we have more revenue come in for sales tax, if we want to expense some of those funds, we can do a budget amendment. If we want them to go into fund balance, we don't have to do anything, we just like go into the fund balance.
So the twenty twenty portion of that, I mean, we've already spent a hundred and seventy and we just talked about spending another two hundred, two hundred dollars. So is there another expected outlay for that one point two, is that for the roundabout or?
The, what we budgeted for twenty twenty was one point two five million.
And we're just not anticipating that we're gonna spend that much, we're just, we're not gonna spend that much out, that we budgeted.
We budgeted one point two five, uh, I believe for the roundabout, we were anticipating to be around a million.
Right.
Um, I'd have to talk to Becky on this one seventy seven.
That, that's what I'm wondering, if that money just hasn't been taken out yet to go on.
I don't, I don't know, I don't recall us having that one seventy seven there, so I'd have to double check with her on that, that might be a adjustment or a previous expense.
But the two, the two hundred fifty thousand is the expected amount that we would.
For next year.
Apply for whatever projects.
Yeah.
So, and so that one million was supposed to be for the roundabout.
Yeah.
Which is a matter, that hasn't been transferred yet.
Yeah, we were actually going to do one million for roundabout and two hundred fifty for Eighth Avenue extension, extension. Uh, realistically, I don't think we'd be in a position to be able to tackle the extension this year, so.
Well, we're just, we just approved the extra money.
Yeah, but we could always do amendment if we had to.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Uh, but like I said, for next year's budget, we budgeted six hundred thousand. We didn't anticipate, we anticipated to be very conservative with that number, but anything we pull in more, go into fund balance, like I said. And we'd still be able to use it for projects, it's just that we would have to go in and amend the budget, so. Um, for Highway Fund, to keep the budget balanced, council approved before COVID and all that, they approved us to have a fourth position for Public Works. What we did is we froze that, held off until we see the impacts of COVID. Uh, what I recommend is we'd hold off, we'd continue to hold off on that. And then if revenues did come in better, we can do that. Uh, that's how, if we hold off on that fourth, uh, Works position, we'd be able to make our budget a lot easier. What we're trying to do is have minimal changes to our mill levy, that's our overall goal. So that's why I wanted to address all the other funds first and then show you the general fund. Um, general fund. What I do want to stress is, and you saw this last year, you can see this trend from previous years. Um. In previous years, the reason why our general fund, say in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, wasn't as high is we weren't accounting for a lot of these different avenue funds that we should have. So that's why it looks like our, our balance is so much higher than it was before. The other factor you have in here, so we're looking at revenues. This year alone, we're anticipating to be around one point eight million. The reason why that number is so high, our revenues are so much higher is because we have a lot of construction happening in town. Building permits are, they pull in some of that revenue for that, but we also have expenses tied to it. High school, middle school, those costs quite a bit. They're pulling in a lot of money for the city in revenue for those years, those are just spikes, it's going to plateau back down though. Uh, for our building permits, so, well, actually before again, building permits, their property tax revenue. What that shows is keeping our mills the same. Our property tax evaluations have increased, a mill for this next budget year is going to be valued around seventeen thousand five hundred. Where was mill, a mill was valued at about fourteen thousand five hundred this budget year. So that's why you have that change, property ta, property valuations increased due to all the property assessments or appraisals. For building permits, we're budgeting a number very similar to this year. Revenue wise for building permits, we're at a hundred forty three thousand and we haven't had the high school building permit hit that yet. So when that hits, that's going to be a lot bigger. Um, but next year, we anticipate quite a few houses, we anticipate over a hundred houses or building permits. We also anticipate to have some construction in Vissos Industrial Park, which we have some permits pending already for there. And other activities, the school, elementary school, there'd be the addition onto Horace Elementary. So we anticipate, we're probably going to be well over that three fifteen, but that's where we get the number, like I said, it wanted to be on conservative side of it. This where you can see the drop in state aid, state aid distribution we were anticipating this year. That two hundred twenty thousand dollars was a conservative number, based on some of the estimates that we're getting from League of Cities for twenty twenty before COVID. We were supposed to get around two hundred forty thousand, two hundred thirty, two hundred forty thousand. Uh, what we're getting from League of Cities to factor in the estimates now, uh, puts us at a hundred seventy six thousand. So that's quite a drop right there with it. And then the other factor too is interest earnings, uh, that dropped. In twenty nineteen, we pulled in seventy seven thousand dollars in interest earnings, just for general fund related. Interest rates were a lot better, our interest rate was around two point four percent for our, uh, general fund and for anything bonded. That dropped to under one percent now, just COVID hit interest rates across the board, including what we pull in for interest rate for city funds. And then also a payment from Park Board, uh, what this is for is the shed, that big shed at Freed Park. Uh, we've been working at, with the Park District to get them to fulfill that repayment. Uh, they have paid off this year's balance that they will, but then next year, that drops the remaining balance they have left will be sixteen thousand six hundred.
Next year, we'll be done.
Yeah.
Then that.
So that's also a drop.
Finally.
Yep, so.
Now, the one question, the seven oh six, for the miscellaneous proceeds.
Ten thousand?
The actual for.
What, the reason why that is high is because accounting wise, the, that's due to cash and lieu amounts. And accounting wise, we're going to have to come back and amend our budget to reflect that increase in miscellaneous. Uh, pretty much all of that is cash and lieu dedication, so like law service.
It's transferring the money out.
Yep, so we have to show a revenue in and then what you'll see is expenditures will be a lot higher in certain areas and it's because we're. Moving that money back out and move it into the Park District.
Okay.
So that's why you see miscellaneous revenue so high is, uh, we would love to be able to just say, yep, it doesn't have to, general. Uh, we did check with Ike Bailey or auditors on that to confirm, to make sure we were calling for it the proper way that they would like to see. Um, so it doesn't hurt us in audit and this is the way that we're supposed to do it. In the past, we didn't ever reflect that, uh, before, so like I said, we're trying to clean up audit issues. The revenue or expenditures, you have salaries and benefits, we've increased the number of positions. And that's where it'll hit us full time for this year or for next year. Also benefits went up or costed, we talked about that at one of our last council meetings about costs of benefits, like insur, health insurance went up.
But does that include another new position? I mean, that's a pretty good jump from six oh three to eight thirty.
Yep, that's the other part, that's probably the biggest part of this. Uh, the part of that jump also, so we had to increase because of benefits, but we also have, because of engineering, we've been talking about. What this would do is allow us to bring on engineer position internally. And we'd still work with different consulting or the consulting firms and everything, because we have workload wise, that's tremendous. But a lot of the general tasks that we've had engineering tackle, such as looking at a drainage issue, looking at a right away permit. Go, you know, all the various miscellaneous type tasks, those costs exceeded over a hundred thousand dollars last year. Is, and so what we're looking at is we bring that position on internally and we'll have that much more time available as a resource. And that'll be able to work more involved with the engineering firms we're working with on the different developments and different projects we have going on.
So right now, that's the only staffing change.
That, that's a staffing change. Yeah, it's bring on that engineer position.
But is it also, Public Works does not fit in this budget, right? That's spread across the different budgets.
Public Works.
Basically said we're holding right now.
Yeah, Public Works is impacted, Public Works employees are paid through highway, water and sewer funds, the enterprise funds, yeah. Uh, they are not funded through general fund, so that impacts us there. And that's why you'd see the engineering position, that's why you see a drop in contractuals, it's right there. The other thing that we would like to do, but it's not feasible this next budget year, is we've had interest, you know, interest before is when do we add the next deputy? So we're, you know, Sheriff John and I have been talking about that and looking at our options there, could we add a full time, could we add a part time, you know, half time? Uh, that's where COVID kind of hit us also because they hit the county's budget. Uh, we're not proposing to add another deputy for next year and the reason why is because the county is looking at, do they make cuts or what do they do? And they're not looking at adding positions. And right now, the deal we have with the county is we pay the salary and benefits and they pay for the equipment and training. So they cover the cost of the squad car, the equipment, all that fun stuff. And that's, it's about, it's, it almost breaks out to about fifty fifty cost share with the county. So they're subsidizing a lot of our, you're about half our costs right now for law enforcement. Uh, to add another position, we didn't see that it would be very favorable with the county at this time. We're trying to work with them of maybe the twenty twenty two budget year, push for that third deputy. Uh, talking with Sheriff, we, he believed that we, we still, we could probably get by through next year. I know Corey has talked to him a little bit too and like I said, it would be nice to have, but we're gonna have that population growth. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, that's probably when we're going to need it, is twenty twenty two timeframe, so that's what we're looking at there. And then. Yeah, that's.
I should give you a jump in the other.
I'd have to expand it to look at it. Other. The biggest jumps are moving funds, the jump, the biggest reason why we have the transferring funds over to general fund or to Highway Fund. The hundred seventeen thousand moving it to ju, or the Highway Fund. The hundred seventeen thousand moving it to jump or the highway fund. That's why we had the big jump. We're also trying to at least put something or budget to put some funds into reserves. For equipment reserve or um, just a general reserve fund for the city. We have not had those general reserve funds and that's something that has come up in just even our bonding discussions. We went through temporary bonding. That has come up in discussions too. So we're trying to cover address areas. That have been brought up to our attention either through bonding discussions or audit discussions. To help put us in a better financial position for the city in future years. So that's why we're trying to put some on some of those funds there. But the biggest reason why the contractual or miscellaneous was because of the transfer of general fund or to highway fund. Uh, what, one last area I had, like I said, I don't believe that we'll have to do really a whole lot of change to. To the mill for this year. If we did, it would be pretty minor. We're talking one or two mills. In future years, we're going to be, in twenty twenty-two, we're probably going to be talking mill increase for sure. When you compare Horse to all the other communities, and I'd like to bring that back to you, so probably next meeting, just to show you. Just a quick snapshot, how we compare, I found this data this, this morning. Uh, when you compare Horse, and I can show you the quick spreadsheet, the Horse compared to every other city in like Cass County, for example. Our mills. Are at sixty point seven six mills. When you look at some of our other neighbors. Harwood is at eighty point one seven. Castleton is a seventy-three point oh eight. Kindred is fifty-three point four, so they're a little lower. The average across the state of North Dakota is seventy-six mills and we're at sixty point seven six. So it's just. So yeah, so you see what's going on and I'd be more than happy to share this with the council, but it shows you. I'll take West Fargo, we're compared to West Fargo a lot and West Fargo has seventy-seven point ninety-eight mills. Their mills are also, their valuation, each mill is worth a lot more in West Fargo than it is in Horse. So those are different factors to look at. What, what that's looking at is how much does it cost to buy a home in that community or to live in that community? That's where you can look at valuations too and keep in consideration. But like I said, I just wanted to point out that I'll refine this to be. More reflective of some of the bigger cities across the state and also focus on more comparable communities in our area like Cass County. But I just wanted to show that, just give you a quick snapshot and when folks do. Bring up the conversation about property taxes, this really helps to paint the picture of how much. Of the pie comes from Horse. So our mill is sixty point seven six, the county fifty-six point four one, school district hundred thirty-seven point two five. Uh, park district sixteen point seven eight and fire and I believe there was another one, but it's mainly fires fourteen point three eight. So it gives you an idea of the breakout city, county, everybody else. So when folks are bringing up that conversation of how much they pay in property taxes, we only make up a small chunk of the pie. We, it's around twenty, twenty-five percent is typically what a city makes up. Um, school districts are the highest, counties are typically right about where cities are. So like I said, I'll summarize some of this data for you and you'll be able to see it and we'll try to do a little bit more analysis. Uh, when you compare Horse statewide, we're around the fortieth, forty-fifth percentile. And then when you compare us excluding oil. Counties in the state, we're probably around twenty, twenty, twenty-fifth percentile of where we fall compared to others. Not saying that we have to increase or anything, it's just to let you know where we fall compared to other communities across the state. So, yep. Uh, as for budget, I don't have any action for you guys to take on this tonight. What we'll be asking for in upcoming meetings, I want just to give you a snapshot. I'll show you a little more detail later on at the next meeting and then the following one. I believe it's the first one in August will be take, asking you to take action on the general fund budget. What you do is when you take action on the general fund, that's your preliminary budget. Your preliminary budget is when you're setting the cap for the mills. You could always show an increase. You have a public hearing opportunity. And then at that time, you could lower, after that public hearing, you could lower the mill back down or you keep it the same or whatever you want to do. We cannot go up. Once you approve a preliminary budget, you set your cap of the mills or property valuation. You set that, that's done. We can't go up. All we can do is go down. So we'll be having that discussion here. At probably the next council meeting and then in August and we'll set the hearing date for the preliminary budget. And then at, I believe that's in late August, early September, we have that public hearing. And then that's where the council would take action on the overall general fund budget. So. Do you have any questions on it? I, I know it's boring. It's a lot of information I threw at you. I don't expect to retain it all right off the bat. Uh, it's just going to be, that's why I'm trying to break it up in conversations. I've seen other communities at times where they'll have. You know, three, four hour long budget sessions and I don't think that. You're really going to retain it if I throw it all at you at that time. So that's why I'm trying to break it up into about thirty, forty-five minute chunks.
I just know the conversation's got a lot longer since we started here four years ago.
Yep.
Because there's so much more budget, budgeting actions that need to take place. So. Yeah, that's more to think, we'll just, well, good introduction. We'll have to, you know, digest this a little bit more probably through that.
One, one thing I will expand on really quick is we have a lot more data. So we're able to actually do trends a little bit, but our data's becoming a lot more reliable now. So that's something that's nice to see. We're able to break it up a lot better than we used to. So.
Well, definitely helps with this process we're going through right now because that's something we have not had.
Yep.
You gotta base some of this on trending. We were doing a lot of hand waving at one point, so.
Yep.
Okay. You guys have any questions?
Nope, just to focus what we stated, which was trying to keep the mills as most available as possible.
Okay, good.
All right, no other questions then, why don't we move on? Jim, what do you got?
I'm not quite sure how I follow all that fun stuff.
You gotta have some exciting, come on Jim, come on jazz it up.
Jazz it up a little bit.
Uh, we'll run through the projects real quick, the construction projects. Start with the uh, service to one hundredth Avenue sanitary sewer contracts have been distributed. Shop drawings have been gone back and forth. No update on the status on that project yet. Uh, we'll skip over eight avenue Maple Grove final cornice we presented to you at the next meeting. Park and Rec, the product trails grant, um, Conroe seventeen trail is complete, just some punchless items remaining. Final inspection was held last week on that and Park and Rec was very happy with it as am I. Uh, Lakeview and seventy-ninth, sixty-eight point three percent complete. That has a long way to go before Saturday when its completion date is.
I know, so what's that mean?
Go team.
That means they probably aren't going to make meet their completion date, so.
So right now, they can go, they're going to have to have a change order to extend the date, right?
No, we'll just start assessing them liquidated damages for every day that they're beyond that date. So. I forget what the dollar amount is on that one per day, but we'll just start assessing that on every basis.
I mean, are they going to come back and say, well, it's our fault or some?
Well, I'm assuming they will, any chance they can or help try and whatever they can, so.
Did they have like reindeer's documented that they're going to try to push it or?
Uh, personally, I think they're going to try to do something with COVID nineteen, but they haven't yet, but I have a feeling they're going to try to use that.
What is this one impacting and if it's not done, is it like real impacting the school, getting stuff done or the fields or that kind of stuff? Or a whole bunch of stuff?
There's a component of this that affects the fields. There's a component of this that affects the school. Uh, the school is, you can get to the school off seventy-six avenue with the drop off and you can get to seventy-six avenue off with the. Where the employees and the buses are supposed to park on the north. So that won't be, won't be affected, but. Obviously, the getting to any athletic amenities will be affected. They aren't complete yet. None of those have been completed, but. The stockpile that we approved of the special meeting to be moved hasn't been moved yet, which is in turn kind of slowing up the. Fields, the athletic complexes, so the school's not real happy right now about that. So tomorrow at our construction meeting, we'll make sure we get that addressed and. Get that dirt hole out of there as quickly as possible. So.
One question I had, it, so now you triggered a remember, a memory of, did the school get the easement for the railroad that they needed?
They did, yes.
Okay, all right. I just didn't hear that, so, okay.
They did.
That was a roadblock for our Lakeview finishing up, right?
Um, it was part of it, yeah. The Lakeview addition and dedicating the right way is something I'm going to do right now.
Or was Lakeview or is it Lake, Lakeview Road?
It's, it's Lakeview coming down.
Getting it around the south side.
Getting it, getting that through stream down to eighty-second or eighty-first.
Yeah, so it's semi-related to this line item.
Yes, okay. Uh, seventy-six avenue roundabout, like I said, the final walkthrough. Uh, this spreadsheet's a little outdated just because more information's coming.
So that one can fall off the list now, but?
Not yet. We're going to do the walkthrough will be tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
I anticipate that it'll still be on here for punch list items. Uh, sixty-third street, it's another one of those, it's bundled in with Lakeview and seventy-nine. They have a pretty robust schedule for placing concrete this week. We'll see if they can get it done. From both of those. Vistos, the completion date is Saturday. I think that they won't be able to hit that. There'll be very minimal. If anything leftover, they've been working pretty hard on digging the pond, moving the dirt. Cass County Electric was going to get the power out there today for the lift station and then really the only thing remaining was quoting the lift station. Doesn't have any impact on the completion. They can do that whilst live, that's not uncommon. So I think that one will be met. Uh, Cup Creek, we are, Cup Creek is being held up by sixty-third, I should have mentioned that. So sixty-third avenue or street. The right of way of that is being improved by Cup Creek. So with sixty-third being delayed, it does delay that component of Cup Creek. But other than that, Cup Creek is pretty much done. The private utilities and some other punchless stuff remains on there, tree planting and stuff.
Are they planning on starting home construction out there as soon as that sixty-third is complete?
Well, I think they're going to want to, they're going to want to do it sooner than that. We've been getting some, the city's been getting some. Questions from developers as to when they're going to be able to get into Cup Creek. So once these private utilities are through. I think right now Excel's out there putting in the gas lines, then it can be opened up. But that one, the completion date is the end of the week too.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be close.
They'll be very close. We have to schedule a final walkthrough before we get, before we get builders in there.
I would just expand really quick. Typically, in a residential development, we don't want. Residential building to even start until we've accepted the job. The reason why is because otherwise, if you get damage to the road and all of that, then it gets a bunch of finger pointing between, what was the builder, their subs? Or was it really the quality of work done? So we try to avoid that and that's why we haven't let builders or any builders into Cup Creek yet. Is so that way, uh, the likelihood of any damages to the road before it's been accepted are minimized, so.
But I mean, we're, we're anticipating that acceptance to be pretty close to the eleventh, okay?
Uh, third and fourth, definitely need to report there. Southdale Farms contracts have been distributed. Uh, we've indicated this month as start date on that one and they're going to supposedly hit that one pretty hard.
End of the month when they're going to start moving dirt?
No, I think it'll be sooner than that. I think in a couple of weeks. And they're kind of feeling things out right now. There's some deep sewer on loss or fifth that the foreman is going to put that in and he's going to jump up to Southdale. He's a little more experienced with that deeper sewer and it's a little wetter up at the Southdale Farms. So. But the contracts have been distributed on that. The fifth edition, they got two percent done. Uh, basically they've stripped the site and they've started the sanitary sewer installation. Uh, eighty-first contracts have been distributed. The contractor hasn't interested, expressed any interest in getting in there too soon. And it's difficult because sixty-third's not done yet. There's really no way of getting to it. So that's, that's fine on that. Um, on the miscellaneous side, Wall Avenue still have some preliminary planning. Been working with the geotech on the soils west side of the bridge. Chestnut, we need something going with that. Rivers Edge second addition, we've met with a design engineer last week just to go over some of the. Some of the wishes of the city to incorporate Rivers Edge first in that and then Cory, I'll be reaching out to you on that obstacle. We'll do some, some talking in a workshop situation before we bring it to the council and have everything openly open on that. Just some stuff to talk about, prime sheriffs, so.
So are we waiting on the Rivers Edge that, and Horseshoe Bend? Is that?
So with Horseshoe Bend, I have, I called, I, there was a change in ownership over the winter. And when I met with them earlier this summer, the one new owner expressed some interest in maybe. Scaling back the project a little bit, making it a little bit less, less expensive on his part. So I went through and we did that and we just got some preliminary numbers back on that last week. I called him to go over that. He couldn't make it time. I had some training last week all week, so it was tough to get together. My plan is to do that early this week. Well, in the interim, the five houses north of the Cheyenne River have come forward saying that they'd like somehow to. Connect the city sewer because their septic tanks are failing. So we had to add the component in of getting those five underneath the Cheyenne. And back into a lift station for, for Horseshoe Bend. So we're working through all that to get a good accurate estimate. Because everybody's worried about what the cost can be, rightfully so. So we've been trying to get. Better than preliminary numbers to get something to them that they can act on.
When you say scaling back, does that still mean that they would still be able to decommission the lagoon?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the requirement, right?
Right, so they would limit the amount of gravity sewer installed throughout the trailer park. So we would take. Right now, it's a septic tank and a low pressure force main to a lift station pumped out to a private lagoon. And we would put in a city, a municipal lift stations, gravity sewer, connect, catch that force main. And take it to that, to the SSL versus out into, out into the private lagoon. So yes, the, the end goal would be the same. It's just a matter of.
Approach to get there.
So the past owner was always worried about the pumps in the septic tanks failing at some inopportune time. And the new owner isn't as worried about that. He happens to be a plumber by trade and is more, he's worried about the cost and what you have to do with.
The other side of it is, does that, would that still have the capacity to handle if they build out to the north of them? It would, you know, because it's that open field, they could still build in there.
So they only have up to the gravel road, basically Deer Creek Parkway and South. North of that is, is somebody else.
Well, but they would end up, you know, they would end up paying for part of that sewer line.
So the way that we've originally, or the way that we've initially looked at the lift station for that area would be the service. Horseshoe Bend, Riverdale, the houses north of, of um.
Cheyenne.
The Cheyenne and actually some of the sixty-four seventeen area that we couldn't pick up with the lift station for Southdale Farms. So that would be adequately sized as far as the structure. Now, when you get into pumps, we have to potentially install smaller pumps, but have the ability to up them as the flows come online. So.
All right.
You have questions, guys? Oh, I guess I do have one. Middle school progress, same story, different day? Tell you what I got out of it, yep.
Okay, thanks. Are they still looking to at least have one pod completed in time for August? Is that still?
I think, I'm probably know more about that than me. If they, have they asked for anything?
They have not asked for a temporary CO, but we know that it's coming. Uh, what they're shooting for is to have all the academic areas done. Uh, I don't, we'll see, but.
I'm just curious, is it, if they're going to be able to get that one, at least one operation, so they can.
The last I heard that the school district wanted in the end of the month or even the middle of the month to get their.
End of July.
And all that stuff.
End, end of July they are shooting for, or I believe towards late, end of July they are shooting for having the. School, basically academic areas done so they can start moving stuff in.
That's too late because they won't have enough time.
I anticipate the CO discussion will be occurring pretty soon.
Yeah, yep.
Yep.
All right.
Or at least a temporary.
Yep, it would be a temporary they'd be asking for.
Let's, let's try to have just a little bit more of an update on that at the next meeting. I don't want an elaborate thing, but let's just see if we're on.
I will. Their, their minutes, they. I will, uh, their, uh, their minutes, they've been inviting only, uh, necessary people due to the COVID thing, so crashing their construction party hasn't really been.
Just wear a mask, no big deal. All right, Russ, get in here with that.
I'll sell you an M ninety-five.
Guys can make it happen.
You're not trying to borrow me one.
All right, uh, Brent, what's the, you have an update?
Okay, I have a handful of good news items.
Oh, good, wow, what?
Are you sure?
Yes, one, I got a letter in the mail today, no finance that we're awarded our second phase of. Uh, the Conroe road seventeen bike path, so this will be eighty-first to seventy-six, we received, we were awarded. Uh, transnational alternative funds, this is a funding source that we apply through, through with, or through the county or with the county. And it's through MetroCock, uh, but it's a North Dakota DOT.
Yes.
Grant, so it's funded through that source, the previous one, or the one that we're just finished up is the, through Parks and Rec. I, my experience has been DOT ones are pretty, a little easier to work with.
You have to follow their specifications, you have to go through their process.
But is that something, I mean, is that something to be done this fall?
No, it's, uh, done in twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
So the plans have to be done December to March of twenty twenty-one for construction in twenty twenty-two.
Yep, December twenty, December one, twenty twenty-one to March fifteen, twenty twenty-two is when we have to have the plans done and then we'd be looking at twenty twenty-two and the construction will occur. We're looking into our, if we're able to amend our application or not for, uh, Parks and Rec or RTP grant. Uh, we're checking to see if we can make any adjustments to.
Obviously, because of the school, I mean, if we could have a trail with seventy-six, that'd be wonderful.
Yep.
Yep, schools open.
We did a walkthrough the week before last, I believe it was, with the North Dakota Parks and Rec, they were very impressed with the project. And we did the long Conroe road seventeen for the path, uh, I don't think they've ever, they ever really see or very often see complete. Projects where they actually had the grass taken right away and they had trees getting planted in, typically you folks are just focused on the path and that's it. Uh, we put a lot of effort into having that project be a little bit more involved than a path, so.
They're also very happy with the, um, city in their overmatch to create a better product, it's, they like to see that, it's utilizing the grant money to its fullest. And to create a better product, just not the minimum, but to go above and beyond, it's very happy to see that, so.
The, the one thing I want to point out though is I think being, being working, my experience working with grants before, more on the DOT side. That typically helps you get grants in the future, when they have it, they see a track record of working with you and they like your projects, it's a little easier sell. So I'm not saying that it would get funded every time, but it's a little easier sell to sell your project for grant funding when they've been impressed with your work before.
So, so since we're talking about the grant and in the bike path, is there a plan to have a sign that says no motorized vehicles?
There, there wasn't, but there seems to be a need for one, I know, this weekend.
I saw it again today, I've seen multiple ATVs just rip roaring down that bike path, I'm like, this is just absolutely insane. As soon as they're, somebody's gonna, some, and they're two young kids.
Right.
So I'm like.
Well, I noticed where they had been in the bottom, the ditch was soft and then came up.
Of course, of course, and then they're gonna tear up all the grass and we just, you know, never mind.
Yep.
I, that's what I'm wondering, if.
If they're in the ditch, technically they're.
If they're the bottom ditch, they're fine, but if they're up on the trail or on that bike path, then the deputy should be finding them.
Yes, they could be fined for that, is my understanding.
Something in horse happenings?
Yeah, we have, we had an article on horse happenings.
And kids don't read, so, you know, make schools up, they don't read.
We, we could try to work on a video.
But I get it, I have got to get you.
So, but yes, we had a recent, or last week we had an occurrence where like a contractor in Lost River is parking their vehicles on bike path. And we found always that's a traffic issue, it can be enforced by the deputies and they can be decided for driving on the bike path.
But they also iterated that there should be signs up so they can push the enforcement, that's why.
But we, we could look into the signage.
We've gotta do something to keep those kids off because they've got to know that they're, it's illegal for them to do that.
Is it, would it be possible to even have some sort of a temporary, um, marking painted on to the thing just because it's new and?
We, we'll look at, we'll look into the options, what we could do for trying to encourage, discourage. That traffic, because technically they can be in the ditch, even if it's stated they're, they have, I believe they have the legal right to be in the ditch, but. We'll look at our options.
But on the trail, just saying no.
Yeah.
So no motorized vehicles or something like that, right?
Yep.
Five thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, exactly, per rider.
All right, you got work for it.
I have more, I have more. Here, I'm trying to tell you more good news. Here, I'm trying to tell you more good news, so. Uh, other good news, horse happenings went out last week, uh, very happy with the product on that one. Another good news, this is probably the biggest news of the night for everybody, or for the council, is our bonds, temp bonds sold. And the interest rate we got on that is one point nine percent, that is very good, our previous ones were two point five and two point nine. So one point nine is really good, uh, our last council meeting, they brought up our bond rating and that helped us tremendously. Uh, we're put, another item I had is we're going to push for, we're pushing for the audit to be completed in August. If we're able to have that done in August or shortly thereafter, when we go to do our permanent financing of last year's temp bonds. We could possibly be able to use that audit. And our, and have another bond rating done with the city, which isn't very common to do a bond rating and then another one back to back. Like that, but it does happen and the dynamics of our financials change, so having that audit gives us a whole nother year of financials to be able to show them. Along with our story, things like that.
And that was part of our story with them to explain how some of these things that came to be, and I think they were receptive to having that, you know, show us the next audit and let's see what we can do for you.
Yep, uh, feedback we got from, from the colliers who we work with on the bond, and I said they're, they're talking about. That will help us, having those financials will help us, getting a chance to having their bond rating, that'll help us, our interest rate. They had a lot of positive towards us, I was very surprised, I wasn't expecting that type of rating that we got, or, uh, interest rate that we got. I think even our folks at, at Colliers are.
Cool.
I don't know if Onset was surprised, but we were surprised, so, and I, pretty much everybody working on the bond, we were happy with that.
Yeah, you already knew Lucas, right?
Yeah.
Come on.
No, I get the information they took from you.
Yeah, he, he actually got the call after me.
So did most of the bonds again get purchased by local banks in town?
I don't, I don't know that until.
I don't know if we know yet.
I don't, I don't know that yet, all I knew was the acceptance of the file number, actually what they had to do was, so they put the bond out for sale. And then they get so many responses, if they get too many responses, they actually go and reprice the bond and then. Put it back out and the reason they do that is to make it more competitive to a smaller group. And that's what happened in our case is we had so many, uh, investing firms respond and actually put in that colliers had to. Rebid it or reprice it and then it got even more competitive that way, so that's. That's really good news, is when you could have investment firms, actually that many of them. Going against each other, wanting to buy your bond, that's a very good problem to have, so we're very happy with that. Another item I had is, we've heard concerns about speeds on Wall Avenue, I put a request in with the sheriff's department. Reminded them of the request to have a speed trailer put out there, so I don't know exactly when that will occur, I know Ross was looking at that to see if we could get a speed trailer out there. And help discourage some of that, um, also, I know that truck guys are going to be present again, they, they were gonna. They won't tell us exactly when they'll be down there, they want folks to know ahead of time, it's just, they anticipate to be back. And then the last item I had is, uh, we're working with Horse Lutheran Church to have food trucks in town. Start off one day a week and then possibly do a second day, uh, that'll be brought up, their church council tomorrow. I've heard positive feedback from folks that I've ties to on there, that I've heard from, uh. And I met with the church council president last week, discussed it and through that, you know, brought up the idea, uh, like I said, we anticipate to have an answer. Tomorrow night or Wednesday and then we'll see what happens from there, but we're trying to encourage the food trucks, the reason why is because. We have a lot of workers present during the day with COVID, people aren't traveling as much. And to have those options in the community, I think that would be used quite a bit and we've had interest from food truck companies to come to horse, so. We're working on that, uh, you'll have at least one application for a food truck permit next council meeting. Uh, we've gotten one, I know, I wouldn't be surprised if we get a few others, uh, how our food truck ordinance is structured is that food truck permits have to come to council. That's, so then you're aware of them doing business within town, uh, their permits are good from the time they take, we're awarded it. To November of that calendar year, so if they get one in January, it's good till November, if they get one now, it's good till November. So, yep, and that's all I had.
One thing that I was just thinking of, you, we, we got a new employee started in the last two weeks, I don't know if you announced her starting?
I thought I did.
Did you?
Either way, I can announce it again for you, so.
I mean, I was just, I, I don't know that we brought it up the last council meeting there.
Our new.
Yeah, I think we did.
But anyways, so you catch, catch it Brian, there is, we have a new communication specialist, she started about a week and a half, two weeks ago, her name is Hannah, or Hannah Boar. Uh, she comes to from us from WDAY News, she used to be a reporter and news anchor, weekend news anchor. Yep, so has a lot of experience working with air views and media, uh, so we're excited to have her back, or have her on board here, so, yep.
So just long as people that are, you know, looking at horse happenings news or wanting something published, we've got her as a resource to be able to help with that.
And Hannah is primarily working with all social media and then also will be working with the website and then horse happenings. Horse happenings will involve both Hannah and Bobby from our staff, uh, but they'll be between the both of them.
And events.
And then events too, yep, so we have plenty for them to do.
All right.
Yeah, so.
All right, portfolio reports, uh, July fourth, the bigger had their fireworks, we got a lot of compliments on that, so I want to thank Kelly and company for putting that on. Making that work this year, um, I kind of want to reiterate to folks the census, if you haven't done it yet, do it, get it done. Uh, we're seeing it like seventy-four, seventy-five percent, we need to get that twenty-five percent finished off, otherwise you're just leaving money on the table. No use doing that, we need it. Jim, I was gonna ask you, did anything happen with the signage at the Greyhawk yet, have we done anything with that or talked about it? Okay, that's something we put on our list of to do's, I think, talk about that a little bit, um. Has there been any more discussion about the nine street up there?
Not, not with me.
Not with.
The, the developer of that development has reached out to me. The week before fourth, wanted to get a time to talk after the fourth, and so I'm waiting to hear back from him.
Got it, okay, just to make sure it's still in the queue here, that's all. The other thing on here, had a couple residents and I wanted to did it again tonight to remind. About putting possibly signals or flashing lights at the roundabout for the crosswalk, you know, Jim and Brent have talked about that. That might be something we want to look at probably. What do we need to do to make that happen, because I think that's, people are gonna need to be trained to slow down there because there's gonna be bike traffic this fall. And I don't want people just come screaming through there.
My preference is some, somewhat of a pedestrian activated warning system versus one that just flashes off, I mean, you get a little bit dumb, dumb to that, so if you. Have to physically push the button, the lights start flashing, then you can cross it.
Yeah, and then, do we need, if we're gonna do it on the south side, do we need to have a sign flashing for those entering on the north side of the roundabout to slow down as they come in?
Uh, I'll have to do a little more research on how to sign the roundabout like that.
Yep, I'm just throwing out there.
Is it up on the roundabout or on Lakeview?
The crossing that we're putting in for the shared use path will be at Lakeview Drive.
Okay, so what we want there, you're talking.
They're talking, I'm talking about people coming from the west side on seventy-six to go through the roundabout with their bicycles. We want to make sure that there's some type of a flash mechanism so people are aware that there's a crossing taking place. They don't enter, they, they don't enter in there blindly, but there's some mechanism telling them that there's.
Stop.
There's pedestrian traffic, yeah, going through and that takes precedence.
We'll need to do a, I mean, like I said, the school opening will have a lot, I'm sure, but saturation of communication through all of our platforms that.
Right.
That is a big change in terms of the guys slowing down.
We may as well start talking about, now that we're a month away from doing this, school opens, we gotta get some communication out, things like that as well, so. All right, John's not here, Dave, what do you got?
Uh, don't hit me on.
Okay, Chelsea?
Nope.
Brian?
I got nothing else this time.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else to talk about, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Say it.
Dave, Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are dead.
Yes, I know where your friend is. Yeah, until I show it to them.